Now, let me turn to announcements. Once again, as I mentioned last month, the board is in the process of choosing an honorary student board member to serve for this school year. We're looking for applications, hopefully to get them by the middle of next week, October 2nd. The application has been distributed to all high schools and is available on the board's website. So that if you know a junior or senior that would be a good candidate to join us for the balance of the year, please encourage them to apply. We look forward to having a board member, I think, at our next student board, right at our next meeting. Correct? Hopefully we will. Great. Again, also to remind you that the board members do provide office hours, and you are welcome to schedule them with the board members. You can schedule them at (7) 735-553-1600, and we look forward to hearing from you. Madam Secretary, would you please share the details for the next board meeting?
Yes, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on October 23rd, 2013. Due to the Columbus Day holiday, on Monday, October 14th, 2013, advanced registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, October 15th, and be extended to Monday, October 21st, 2013, until 5:00 p.m., or until all the slots have been filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with the public participation session for today. We have the honor and privilege of having several public officials with us today, and I hope they will allow me to take them in the order of their ward. I don't know what the normal protocol would be, but I don't know your seniority, if that's it, and sometimes people don't like it if you say ladies first, so I won't do that.[136.01][136.01](Laughter). So, if it's okay with you, I think we'll go in order of the ward numbers, and that means we start with Alderman Pope of the 10th Ward.
Lucky me.[152.31][152.31](Laughter). Good morning, members of the board and all present. My name is John Pope, and I am the alderman of the 10th Ward, which includes the far southeast side of the city of Chicago. I stand before you today in support of efforts to fund and build the new southeast elementary school. For more than three decades, the eastside community has seen its student age population grow. This growth has put us tremendous strain on the existing schools to appropriately accommodate the learning needs of our youth. Specifically, Mathel Galistl El Language Academy has borne the brunt of this population growth. Since 2003, the already overcrowded Galistl enrollment increased by 21%. For more than a decade, Galistl principals, teachers, students, parents, and I have lobbied the Board of Education to provide the necessary funds to provide a decent education for the children. The current population of Galistl is approximately 1,400 students, more than 150% its capacity. This ridiculously high number is more representative of a high school than an elementary school. Galistl has three campuses, with the main building consisting of two buildings built in the 1880s and 1900s. There are also two module units in the playlot. The next campus consists of the leasing of a former Catholic elementary school, which is two blocks away. The third campus exists in the active high school, also two blocks away, where the upper floor is leased by CPS while the lower floors are occupied by the Catholic high school students. Needless to say, this multiple-campus setting is problematic. It creates safety concerns for families, operation difficulties for staff, general communication problems, and has been costly, with millions of dollars spent over the years. The ability to construct a new school to address these issues is long overdue. A new school will allow for overcrowding relief and allow for a quality setting for our children to learn. Isn't that what we, what everyone preaches to our kids, the importance of a good education? But beyond preaching, isn't it our responsibility to provide the basic tools necessary to achieve that education? While the new school has been long sought and will be a welcome anchor and community asset when complete, I would be remiss if I did not also formally go on record to remind the Board of Education of the conditions at Galistl and Jane Adams, two of the schools that would be relieved through this process, and the needs to make additional capital improvements to them. While some, most notably the media, will question, "How can the board build new schools when there have been multiple school closings?", I say, "How can't the Board of Education build this school? One size does not fit all." My brief description of the pains that the community has suffered over the years with the overcrowding simply scratches the surface of how needed this building is. As the board considers the funding of this school, I commend them, I commend the commitment of Mayor Emanuel and Governor Quinn for providing the necessary dollars to ensure that our kids get what they deserve. Again, I support a new southeast elementary school and ask for the board's consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Pope. And let me just say, we appreciate your advocacy and support, and your understanding for the fact that some parts of our city have overcrowding and some have underutilization. And as I know you're aware, over the years, we've actually been moving towards this, perhaps much too slowly, by acquiring land to actually have the -- so you know we have the support here, and I think all the pieces are coming together finally, including the land, so that in fact we can move ahead, and your advocacy and support is really an important, vital part of that, so we appreciate it.
Well, I thank you. I do understand, and I appreciate the funding. It's not to say that I'm happy, and as you alluded to, I wish it would have happened years ago, but we're here now, and we're ready to move forward, and I thank you for the support of this, and the community certainly thanks you as well.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Pope. Okay. Alderman.
Spossato.
Spossato. No, you're out of order.
You're at a hard time.
You're out of order, Alderman Spossato, but I'll let you stay there as long as Alderman Irvin doesn't get upset.[429.00][429.00](Laughter).
Alderman Irvin?
He's around. I was told he was here.
Is he there? Okay.[438.03][438.03](Laughter).
There he is. I knew he was in the room somewhere.[444.87][444.87](Laughter).
Morning, Alderman. I was wondering if your math was going to succeed you, and I see that it did not. But again, I just really wanted to talk about the change in what was originally slated for our RABE school and the original horticulture design, which I think after the community evaluated and looked at, did not necessarily believe that was in the best interest of the children or for the eastern west Garfield Park community, and moving forward on a STEM-based programming of which we, as the LSC and community members, worked together to craft out in the new our RABE school as this moves forward via your approval. So again, we just wanted to thank Teresa and her staff and high school for really looking at not only our high school, but also our elementary schools that will feed into RABE. The science, technology, engineering, and math component, I believe, gives our children the best opportunity to be successful in life. We believe that this component and the supports at the surrounding schools of Erickson, Fairaday, Melody, Heffron, Jensen, as well as Tilton, all of these schools which lie in the east-west Garfield Park community, I believe, give our students that best opportunity to advance, moving forward in their careers if they desire to do so. Furthermore, when we look at the exterior components of many of these buildings, most of our schools are fairly aged, and the capital improvements that are necessary to create a comfortable environment. I did hear a board member, Brennan's component about overcrowding versus air conditioning. However, I will respectfully disagree in our community. We've suffered through many challenges, and to not have the, what we consider to be the basics of what we see across the system in some respects adds insult to injury. But moving forward, I hope that with these capital improvements, you won't hear from me, because our schools will have the necessary components to make the educational setting as positive as it can be. My children have enough challenges. I think that the work that the board is doing and the staff is doing to help remove some of those challenges is to be commended, and again, listening to our community as relates to the implementation, not only of the STEM component, but the capital improvements overall. And the other component, even though most of this has been sitting a while, and that's been the hard part for members of the community to swallow, but to move this ball forward, I think it's been a great point for the members of the eastern west Garfield Park community, and really want to thank the local school council at our RABE for pushing this matter and helping us to craft and create an optimal situation, not just for the high school, but for the children, the total educational component for our children in east west Garfield Park. So again, if there aren't any questions, I'd just thank you all for moving forward on this and giving these kids in eastern west Garfield Park a better class of education than they've been receiving over the past 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. And Todd, you just heard a reason why we need to have more transparency up front. People have different points of view, so thank you for bringing them to us.
Thank you much.[660.51][660.51](Applause).
Now, Alderman Spossato of the 36th Ward. I can actually count.
Nobody in front of me with a lower number? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the board, and thank you CPS leadership for letting me come here and speak and jump in front of everybody else. I really appreciate it. So, I'm just here real simple, just to get the ball rolling. Northwest side, we are taking a beating. Our schools are so overpopulated. Mr. Babitz mentioned up there, 81 schools are overpopulated. Four of them are in my ward. My colleague that's right here with me, she probably has about 10 of them, so you have about 15% of the overpopulated schools in two northwest side wards right there. So we need some help. We need to get the ball rolling now. This isn't something that can wait two, three, four, five years from now. We need to develop a plan to help out. One of you board members was recently on TV speaking about how if people have issues, they could go to their alderman. Well, of course, people come to their alderman all the time, and one of the main issues people come to me all the time about is paying a high tax base, where they're at, they're paying taxes, and we're not getting any help up there. So, we need some help from you guys. It's just a plain and simple message. We need to get on the agenda. Four of my schools are so overpopulated, it's unbelievable. One of them, you guys have done a great job on, built additions, modules, but the other three, they're just 200%, 150%, 140% overpopulated. We need to do something, okay? They don't have lunchrooms, they don't have, you know, the kids aren't out in the hallways. It's just, it's not conducive to a good learning atmosphere. So, that's it, pretty plain and simple. One last thing, and I really didn't come here to pick a fight, but one is, was on TV recently, and I called you up because I wished to speak to you about something, and I didn't receive a call back yet, so that was a month ago, so I'd appreciate if I could get a call back to talk about what I heard on TV that I would like to speak about. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman.[798.51][798.51](Applause). Alderman O'Connor?
President Vitell. I have come before this board on several occasions. I provided testimony here downtown, once at Wright College, and most recently at Taft High School for the 10-year facility plan. It has certainly not gone unnoticed that you have taken the time to visit our corner of the city, to hear directly from our residents in our neighborhoods. I am often joined alongside a group of passionate parents, just as I am today, as well as a group of educators from my ward. I have shared many stories about the dangerous conditions facing our overcrowded and high-performing schools on the far northwest side of the city. Stories of children with special needs being treated in busy hallways, children receiving instruction in broom closets, and parents concerned for their children's safety because of potential fire hazards and crumbling buildings. I've also shared stories of educators pushing through, continuing to deliver a world-class education despite the difficult circumstances surrounding them. In the past, we asked this board to consider the unique challenges facing our schools. We ask for your help. Today, I come before you for a different reason. Today, I'm here to say thank you. In recent weeks, my office has been flooded with emails and phone calls from constituents feeling relieved, feeling like their voices have been heard. They are so incredibly grateful for you taking actions at this understandably challenging time in our public school system. After many, many years, schools like Oriole Park, which is 167% overutilized, and Wildwood, which is 175%, we finally get the additional space they so desperately need. And then there's Taft High School, the only high school on the far northwest side of the city, a school that serves five wards. After literally decades, the school will finally be receiving some critical structural improvements to the campus. These improvements certainly won't resolve all the overcrowding and budgetary challenges affecting our schools, but they will ensure that for now, parents will have the peace of mind that comes with knowing their children will be able to attend a school that isn't crumbling as a result of overutilization. I ask that you continue to monitor these schools and wards like mine that are busting at the seams because of the incredible quality of education students are receiving. Again, I want to thank CEO Barbara Bird Bennett, Mayor Emanuel, President Vitell, and each and every one of you for listening to the concerns of our community and for investing in our terrific schools. So on behalf of the 41st Ward, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Connor.[992.51][992.51](Applause). Henry, please.
I wanted to make a comment, because I appreciated what Alderman Irvin said, and I actually walked with Dr. Hines with Alderman Irvin, and we looked at a number of the schools in his district, and we've heard from three aldermen who have had overcrowding issues in the northwest, and two, and one in the southeast, and clearly, there are different problems in different places. So I just wanted to clarify my remarks when I said I thought that overcrowding is a more important issue than air conditioning. It's not that I dismiss air conditioning, but I think in terms of learning for our students, it's a key issue. It's pretty tough to learn in an environment which is terribly overcrowded. Now, I suggest this for Todd. If you want equity, which is another issue across the city, and you have underutilization in the south and southwest, and you have overcapacity in parts of the north and northwest, one way to deal with that is to say, on the capital budget, well, we're going to allocate a certain amount of money per community, and if the big need in the south and southwest is not in overcrowding, we'll put some money into air conditioning there. If we have an issue in the north and northwest, to me, overcrowding is more important than air conditioning. You can talk to the alderman, you can talk to your local council. So I'm not oblivious to the equity issue when you have underutilization in one part of the city. Doesn't mean we should starve that part of the city for any funds. It would be patently unfair to do that. But there are ways to try to balance equity and need, and that's something I think you need to consider. So I wasn't, I know Alderman Irvin left, I wasn't suggesting we should make, sit around and make no improvements in capital budgets in the south and southwest part of the city at all while we deal with overcrowding problems somewhere else. I mean, we have to be cognizant of all the areas of the city. I think we can do that.
Okay, thank you. And Alderman, thank you for both advocating previously and for your recognition that we do try to respond.
Well, I think it's important when you come before, I've been here a few times, so if I'm going to ask, I think sometimes you have to acknowledge people and say thank you as well, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
On behalf of the Oriole Park School community, I just want to say thank you for hearing and recognizing our need for the overcrowding to be addressed.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.[1171.15][1171.15](Applause). Alderman Smith?
I'm Alderman Michelle Smith of the 43rd Ward. I'm here joined today by many members of our local school council, Jerry Quant and Stephanie Jensen, Angela Henning, president of Friends of Lincoln Elementary, many parents who are active in the school, Alana Beckerman, Ken Schroeder, Courtney Tedrow, Susan Gury, Paul Savoy, and Colleen Day, and Stacy Mojos, who's representing the toddlers of Lincoln Park, the many hundreds and hundreds of people who moved to the Lincoln Park community specifically to go to Lincoln Elementary. And I'm here on behalf of course of our ward and to, first of all, I want to thank the board for the revisions that have been proposed to the educational facilities master plan on behalf of the schools in the 43rd Ward, particularly Abraham Lincoln Elementary School. We provided extensive written comments and testimony at meetings, and Todd did a really wonderful job soliciting those comments, and I'm glad that the new plan reflects that the growth in the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School enrollment area is really, has been extraordinary and will continue to be extraordinary in the next few years. As you probably know, the Lincoln Elementary overcrowding has been the subject of testimony before this board and at many, many public forums. This year, thanks to the work of this board, we were able to obtain a one-year lease with DePaul University, in their school of education in fact, to accommodate seven classrooms several blocks away to try to chip away at the overflow issues. 60 children still have no classrooms, even in that circumstance, but without even this very short-term solution, we would have had to do what we did last year, which was to compromise the curriculum of the school, cut up the library, teach 11 classes, at least 11 classes from old cloakrooms and basement spaces. While we're very grateful to the board for helping to work that very short-term solution out with DePaul University, the continued overcrowding at Lincoln cries out for change. As our community has demonstrated over and over for the last two years, the overwhelming demographic trends, the popularity of this school, and expected future development in our community will swell enrollment to at least 1,000 students. We are one of the top overcrowded schools, and we know for sure that it is on a trajectory to get much worse. The Lincoln Park community has been working on their schools for 40 years, and it's because of the work by all those parents in the past that has led us to where we are today. I want to see all the children in our ward get the best education possible. I want to see that all the children, our families, and our current attendance boundaries get the same opportunity as the children who went before and continue their great education. Our Lincoln Park schools, and particularly this elementary school, attracts people from all over the city, the country, and the world who relocate to Chicago when businesses move here. I admit, there are a handful of members of our community who don't believe that in addition to our school, it's the appropriate solution, and have proposed other solutions. We, however, have worked with CPS and analyzed every other possible option to handle our school overcrowding. In each case, the, pretty much the dry factual analysis has found other options we're wanting. Based on all the factors and the huge support in our community for this, we again request that CPS fund an urgently needed addition to our school. Thank you. And we have two members who are going to speak, Jerry Quant, our local school parent rep, and then Angela Henning, the president of Friends of Lincoln.
Thanks. My name is Jerry Quant, and I'm the parent of a current Lincoln fourth grader, as well as a four-year-old who is definitely in line to be a Lincoln student, class of 2022. Oof, crazy to say. My wife and I moved here from New York City and chose this neighborhood very specifically to attend Lincoln. I'm an elected parent representative of the local school council, and prior to that, I served on a subcommittee of the local school council commissioned to tackle some of the options for the overcrowding. What we found driving our overcrowding solution, using census data from 2001 through 2010, is that our in-district attendance grew at an average of 8.9% per year. Our in-district enrollment never declined through that whole period. Because of our IB program, our IG program, we had less and less students from out of district coming in. While total population in the attendance area declines at 1.6%, the population of student-aged children continues to rise at 0.6%, consistent with a thriving neighborhood which we see all across the north and northwest of Chicago. And the expectation that two future developments in our attendance boundary are going to continue to provide pressure on that attendance projections. We also objectively looked at 12 different possible options for overcrowding. We went to the extent, that's just how we do it in our neighborhood, I guess. We discussed at length their impact on both our school, our curriculum, and our community. And then finally, through a series of open meetings, we worked with parent and community members to determine the best option for that community using a set of criteria that was established prior to the subcommittee being formed. The option that that subcommittee landed on was a secondary building in close proximity that would allow us to maintain a single K through eight school. Following the report of the subcommittee, the LSC voted on a resolution and requested this exact same thing from the Board of Ed, as well as from CPS, which I know you guys have seen before. So to conclude, I'm going to simply reiterate what the Lincoln LSC requested in a written resolution over a year ago. Please invest in a secondary facility in close proximity to the current Lincoln building so that we can continue to operate one of the highest performing schools in the district and ensure great educational opportunity for all of the kids that live in our attendance boundary today and into the future.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angela Henning, a parent of a sixth and fourth grader at Lincoln Elementary. I'm also very involved in the school through the Friends of Lincoln for the past six years, and I'm currently serving my second year as the president. I'm here today on behalf of the Lincoln Park community to tell you we overwhelmingly support expanding the school to relieve the overcrowding. I know this because of the 1,300 people who have signed petitions, written letters, sent emails to our alderman, Michelle Smith, to our mayor, and to CPS. I also know this from conversations I have with families in the neighborhood, at the parks, at the playgrounds, and at the baseball games. My husband and I specifically moved to this neighborhood 10 years ago to send our children to Lincoln Elementary and to raise our children in Chicago, not the suburbs. I've dedicated hundreds of hours in the past six years as a room parent, an FOL member, and chaperoning field trips. But before me, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members have worked tirelessly for decades to build this school into the high-performing school it is today, with strong art, music, and band programs, sports programming, cultural events, technology, a greenhouse, and the list goes on. I'm here on behalf of the community to respectfully urge CPS to invest in the future of Lincoln Elementary by expanding the school to accommodate the current attendance area. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Smith, and we appreciate it. As you well know, we all are working hard to work with your community and you to solve this problem. It's been around for a while, and we hope we can find a solution that satisfies all, and we will work at it. Appreciate it. Okay. I think we can now move on, although I would, I want to thank all of our aldermen for coming today. I must say, we really appreciate not only your advocacy for your communities, but also the insights that you bring to the challenges in your community. You are an important source of information for us, not just your advocacy, but your understanding of your communities, and it's really valuable to have you work with us on these issues, and we try to be responsive to you as well, hopefully, and if we're not, you should tell us about it, and we will try to do a better job. But it strikes me that in so doing, you've also helped us, helped maybe the public understand the complexity of the challenges we face. You know, last year, we had a lot of people up here talking about underutilization, and now it's a problem we know about, and it's a problem we need to address, but you know, we do, we're now facing that issue of overcapacity, and we really do need to find a solution for it. So again, just thank you for coming and advocating and helping us understand. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to public participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first speaker then will be speaker number one.
Our first speaker then will be speaker number one, Catherine.
Did I, did I see President Lewis here? Karen, did you want to talk to us today?[1784.12][1784.12](Laughter.) Please come and talk to us.[1789.02][1789.02](Laughter.)